Or leave, so I have to tell you guys that. All right, so the first thing on our agenda is executive session tonight. The Halifax Teachers Association has asked to speak before we go into executive session, and I'm happy to let them do so. Did see Mr. Ruiz here. Oh, turn to the back. If you want to speak.
Our membership.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Joyne, the president of HDA. Thank you for being able to speak tonight.
Sure, absolutely.
As you know, Halifax teachers have been working without a contract since June 30th. In good faith bargaining, our negotiating team has been working throughout the summer with your committee's team and are scheduled to continue negotiations on Friday. I stand before you all this evening with my colleagues to express the importance and urgency we all feel to settle a fair contract quickly. For the past nineteen months amidst the pandemic, teachers have given so much to educate the students at Halifax Elementary School while also keeping our school building a safe place to learn. The school committee has had a big hand in providing us with the tools and resources to make it through, and we are grateful. However, our wages should also reflect the same respectful commitment from your team. We hope your negotiating team will continue to work in good faith on reaching an amicable agreement for wages for all Halifax teachers. Thank you.
You're welcome. Would anybody else from the Teachers Association like to speak right now before we break to the second session? Okay. Thank you all for being here. So I need a motion to move to go into executive session.
I move to go into executive session under Massachusetts general law, chapter 30A subsection A subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiation with the Halifax Teachers Union.
Can I get a second? Okay, so we need a roll call to go on executive session. Jim?
All right.
Done? Yes? Me, yes, Gordon?
Yes.
All right. Okay. All right, let's go. Okay, so we recessed our executive session. We are going to reconvene for executive session at the end of our meeting. We didn't finish our conversation. So now we are going back into regular session. Do we need a motion to do that?
No, you made the motion to go out of executive session with the motion to.
Reconvene, so we're good. Okay. Thank you, Area 58, for filming tonight. We need to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Briefly, thank you. I know you worked a very long day, and now it's even longer, so I appreciate your patience. Thank you for waiting.
Thanks for saying that, Jim. Would anybody from the public like to be acknowledged or scheduled to speak at this time? Okay, is anyone? All right, the first thing we have to do is vote our proposed legal retainer. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even see. Come up.
Do you want to sit there or?
Wherever you're comfortable is fine. You can stand, you can come sit, whatever.
She wants the mic phone over there.
If it's green, it should be on. Yep.
Hi.
I'm quick and talk fast.
Looks fine.
And I have a warm accent. Hi, members of the Halifax Elementary School Committee, Principal Bodry, Superintendent Cool, and other guests. My name is Tara Tenello. I'm a parent of a Halifax Elementary School student. First, I want you all to know that I really value and appreciate the time the school committee spent on your elected positions and to support the school, parents, students, and administrators. I hope my comments tonight do not in any way diminish the thanks that I do have. As a fairly new parent in the school district, I was, to say the least, shocked at the August 30th school committee meeting. If I were to be honest, I was a little bit embarrassed and disappointed. We teach our kids compassion, kindness, respect, and acceptance among many other core values. There was little compassion, not a lot of kindness, and barely any respect between members, but truthfully, how you spoke to the administration of the school district, when, in my opinion, they've done a tremendous job leading and educating during the pandemic. Much of the meeting was spent on how masks are terrible for students and how their wet rags now they don't help with COVID, how disciplinary measures should be handled for kids who don't want to wear masks, who are not following mandates. Members were yelling at each other, pointing at each other, speaking under and interrupting each other. This type of communication is not appropriate for kids, let alone adults. I think it's completely fine to be passionate about something and be firm in your beliefs. However, as adults, let's practice what we preach for our children, to be respectful, to hear each other out, and to listen with kindness. You have the principal of the school saying about one hour into that meeting last year that the students and staff did a wonderful job, and there were very few issues about wearing masks. He was then interrupted and went right back into progressive discipline for not wearing masks, and this conversation continued. You had a member asking what the school committee can do so the elementary HDA won't have another year where they're forced to wear the mask. That this person stated that there's a lot more people that would like to see their kids not wear this, and what measures can be taken. Where and how did you get the data? What is a lot more? Throughout the meeting, you didn't ask the administration about any type of recognition matters for these students following mandates. You didn't ask if the students and staff have access to masks, if they need them or need extras. You didn't ask about free lunch this year and if over the summer it's helped children who don't have access to proper nutritional meals. You didn't ask how bus food planning was going and if there was going to be enough of them because of the bus shortage. It was masks. I hope that moving forward, there's a bit more respect and kindness. Masks are no mask that this isn't what my comments are about. Personally, my child is in first grade. Masks is all she knows. She's one of the tongue. We adore her kindergarten teacher, love her first grade teacher. She's made friends, she's had fun, always a mask. She actually loves accessorizing them. We have one of every color under the rainbow to make this fun for her. I look forward to the time when kids can safely show their smiles inside the school. Until that, I hope our school committee is a bit more respectful and starts commending the students and educators. For again, showing us how to be resilient and amazing that they are. I hope the school committee takes a lesson from these kids and practice some kindness. Thank you guys so much.
Thanks for speaking. Anybody else? We need to vote a legal retainer, which is in our packet. Everybody has a chance to, it's in here somewhere. It's pretty standard. We do this every few years, so we can have Fred's company. It just, it just, I can't find it in my packet, but I did see it in my email.
Would you like it back?
And I need to sign it, I believe.
Yeah.
And then we're good to go.
I'll sign the signature off because honestly, you owe me.
I saw that. We're so disappointed when we lose you in a few short months. Did everybody have a chance to read it over? It's pretty standard. It's something we do every couple of years.
There is no increase in the retainer because of COVID-19. We haven't asked any clients for increases in retainers.
Thank you. We appreciate that. You do an awful lot for us, so we're grateful for your service.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this retainer, so this is specifically for Halifax Elementary School. It's not for the entire district. Does everyone have their own retainer with him like the other school committees in the district? Okay.
We have about seven state block. We represent seven school systems, and we represent all Silver Lake school systems.
And all the schools pay the same amount, or?
No, based on the size of the school.
Student and only, okay.
But based on a number of factors, but the Silver Lake, it's primarily based upon the size of the school system. So Kingston is quite a bit more, and Silver Lake is substantially.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I just need a motion to approve the legal retainer.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, anybody second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you can hang out, Fred.
Thank you, everyone. It's our pleasure to represent.
All right, moving along. We need to review and vote the regular minutes of August 30th, 21, and September 16th, 21. So the 16th is our short little meeting that we voted to send the letter, I believe. Yep, and then, do you know that we, oh, I see, it's on separate, okay. So if everybody's had a chance to review them and doesn't have any amendments to make right now, oh, here's one. I will entertain a motion to approve and release the regular meeting minutes of August 30th and September 16th.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Second. Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are releasing these executive session minutes. Doctor Prue?
The.
I don't think I've read them yet, to be honest with you, because they don't come in the email.
Yes, we're asking for a vote and release of the executive minutes of February 26th, 2021, March 1st, 2021. We had actually approved the minutes on April 5th, but we failed to vote to release them.
Okay. Okay, so I need a motion to release the executive session minutes from February 26th of 21 and March 1st of 21.
I'll make a motion to release the executive session minutes of February 26th, 21, and March 1st of 21.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. What are we doing about warrants?
I have a summary for you.
Oh, excellent.
From our business director. So warrants will not be distributed for the signature at the school committee tonight. Since the last school committee meeting of August 30th, there have been two sets of single signature warrants on September 8th, 2021. Fifteen warrants totaling $343,347.28 were submitted to Halifax Town Hall. Jennifer Carroll was able to visit Town Hall and sign on the same date. On October 6th, 2021, 11 warrants totaling $334,566.06 were submitted to Halifax Town Hall. And as of October 7th, 2021, the warrants had not yet been signed, but I don't know. Have you had a chance to sign?
Yes, they're signed. So. I emailed Ceeley.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
All right. Correspondence and reports. I emptied the mailbox, and I gave a couple of things to you, Jill, to give to Ms. Ceeley. They're invoices or receipts from invoices, and other than that, it was a few other things that actually belong to Silver Lake and not us that ended up in our mailbox, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Unfinished business. I don't have anything that's on here to do it. Anybody else? Anything that we didn't finish up? Anyone like to see anything on a future agenda? You want to talk about right now? If not, of course, you can always send an email to myself between now and about a week before our next meeting, and we can throw it on there. All right. Subcommittee's policy did not meet. Negotiations met, but we're discussing that in executive session. PAC?
Okay.
We're giggling.
So the Plymouth Area Collaborative, it was a Zoom meeting. I was semi-present. My 12-year-old daughter helped me out with three different devices, so I didn't hear all the meeting. I was, I know, it was awful. I have request of the minutes, and I will have that information for the next meeting.
Thank you. Do they talk about going to an in-person meetings, or they primarily?
They actually, they actually, this past meeting was a choice, and my choice was to be there in person, but because of schedule reasons at my job, I had to, I couldn't make it, so I was there. I wanted to be there in Zoom, but the computer and the Chromebook and the phone, I don't know. Did my best.
Well, hopefully, in person next time, right?
Yes.
Youth and Rec, I think we're playing a little phone tag with Mr. Steele at the moment, right?
Yeah, he was just calling, yeah.
Oh, right, okay. Well, the gym floor looks nice when you do talk to them. Let them know it was beautiful. PTO?
Yeah, there is actually quite a bit. Booster-Thon, AKA Fun Run, we raised $33,905, which is awesome. We will be dividing it to go to the nature's classroom and the kindergarten playground, updates, upgrades, so that was good. We finally have a full functioning PTO board. Awesome. We have Alani Ryan is our new VP, and Chris Berry is a new treasurer, so probably up next will be Sharon Smiths, because she will be departing sadly next year because Victoria moving on to middle school. Upcoming events, Book Fair is October 25th through the 29th. There should be something going out pretty soon, because we're going to try to avoid cash because of COVID, but they're going to be doing an e-wallet, so I'm sure some literature or something will be coming out. I believe the apparel store is still open, and the next school committee meeting is tomorrow at 6:30.
You mean PTO?
I mean, PTO. It's tomorrow at 6:30.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Capital budget, I think, is going to meet. Right, wasn't there an email going around about capital budget items, or no?
Well, we had a town meeting to discuss the Silver Lake capital budget, and that was, yep, that was September 30th.
Sorry, wrong committee.
That's right.
And admin review did not meet, and neither did Union 31, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Bodry, it's your turn, my friend.
Thanks, Eric. All right, this moment is staying steady, 564 students. Kindergarten, I feel like it's good for us to point out kindergarten, since we met before school started. This year, the class of 2034, we welcomed them in, but for the first time with kindergarten, we actually had them start a week after, because typically they've started the second day, and it's always been a little bit hectic for us to do the kindergarten open house and social, welcome those students in, just when students in grade 1 through 6 are also available, so. We worked with Jill and Ryan and the other schools in the district to kind of push back our kindergarten's start date, which is, has been great, because it gives us a little bit of breathing room, and we also do it, we do the screening in the fall, where typically we've done the screening in the springtime. So between the springtime and the start of school, obviously, students progress over that, those months, so we found a lot of benefits of screening students in the fall instead of the spring. And it gave us the PTO, the K social. Brian and I rode the bus with students. Tom kindly took us down the bumpiest roads he could find in Halifax, but it was really good. We enjoyed going on the ride, so it was nice to get that leader this year that we haven't had in the past. The open house, we welcomed families in the building for the first time in over, I think, a year and a half, and it was a great showing. Staff was ready, we had classrooms set up, we had bulletin boards set up, custodians did a great job getting the building cleaned up and ready to go, and parents were excited. They were in the building, we had no mask issues. It was probably, I mean, I don't know, in there, we had a ton of people, but it was really hot, a lot of sweaty faces, sweaty hat on, I guess. But really, it was just nice to see, there was a good vibe of having parents, families in the building for the first time in a while, so we just enjoyed having that, that feel back in the community. Then, as Janet said, we have the Booster-Thon, which was another event that we kicked off, and had a lot of parents attend that meeting as well. And we had, this was the first time, I think it was two years ago, I think we did the last Booster-Thon, but we've always done it in the springtime. We've done well with it, but this, this year, we asked Booster-Thon if they could move it to the fall. We felt that we, PTO, we had discussions with them. We thought that it would be a better turnout, and, you know, kick it off in the beginning of the year, and the PTO wanted to look at this as one of their major fundraisers, instead of doing a lot of smaller fundraisers throughout the year, which is a lot of time and energy, so this one proved to be our most successful yet, with over $33,000, so we're super happy. The weather played perfectly, so we were watching the weather throughout the day. I think as soon as we finished it, it was like the rain, we got the kids indoors, and then it started to rain.
Downpour.
So it's.
Yeah, it was perfect.
It was good timing, and we did three runs. I mean, we had some takeaways from it. We started, the first run was probably our busiest run, because we had K1 and 3, I think we had in that group, which was really a busy run. A lot of families showed up, so I think the biggest hurdle we had was mainly just the cars on campus, getting the first group out, next group in, but Booster-Thon was great. I mean, families showed up, and, you know, jumped in, and we had a good turnout, so I'm not sure exactly what Booster, if we're looking, what we're looking at for next year for Booster-Thon, if we'll do it again, and that's probably a conversation we'll have with PTO.
Well, after looking at the kindergarten playground, I'm kind of happy that half of that money's being delegated to do some work there.
Definitely needs it.
It'll be nice. I mean, the sand.
The sand.
The sand pit out there is, we've had enough of it, but it'd be nice if we could make some renovations over there. And we have, so Good to Meet, I'm sorry, Brian's not here tonight, but he is, he's been our mascot, our Halifax hero, and he's been doing a great job, so we recognize the students each month, of those students that are showing those character traits and skills that teachers are teaching in the classroom, of, you know, just being kind to one another, being, you know, resilient and working hard and treating each other kindly, so they get hero bands. And Brian, he dresses up in a hero outfit, he has a mask and his cape, and he has a newly edited fanny pack that holds his hero bands in both separate sides. It really is a good sight to see. I don't even know if the newsletter last week had the picture of Brian.
I was gonna say, pictures.
It is good. He really enjoyed the fanny pack that has.
They're back in style now, you know.
Well, he has it. He's excited, and I think we're gonna try and dazzle him a little bit, because he puts like the smaller bands in one pocket, and then he puts the larger bands in another pocket, so he's really taken over the hero mascot. So I'm sad to say he's not here, but he does take on the role very.
Next committee meeting, can we have him show up in the Halifax?
We could do that. Might have to pay him a little extra, but we'll get him on it. But Halifax heroes, we recognize them each month, and then we use the front bulletin board in the main lobby with pictures, and then the traits of those students that enter the board, so students like that, and they get their bands. And we have, October is Bullying Prevention Month. That goes along with our Second Step program. In the classroom, students are working with the teachers to recognize, report, and refuse bullying. It's a, we're in the second, we're now a second step, and it does have a bullying component there, so if you see your students coming home with discussions about bullying and how to recognize and report and refuse bullying, that's what they're learning in the classroom. A few dates to remember, obviously, school committee tonight, you've got PTO, that is a remote meeting.
Yes.
It's, the link was sent out on Parents Square.
Yep.
And with the agenda that was on there, that's tomorrow night at 6:30. We have Picture Day on the 18th, and then on the 27th, we have Fall Conferences. We are offering in-person and remote conferences for families, since we seem to have a really good turnout. Like last year, I think we have even more families that were able, just because of the ease of being able to kind of log in with teachers and set up conferences at that time, so we're giving that as an option.
I love that we're continuing that. I think that's great for parents who are working and have a hard time trying to get back to the building for those.
Yeah, we're excited to be able to offer that. I mean, we're just trying to figure out the logistics of, you know, teachers in the classroom that have to balance, you know, going from a computer screen to a parent, and that's kind of where we're looking at, how best to manage that talkback and forth, giving families, you know, the opportunity to meet with our staff, but also not putting our staff through the grinder of 26 conferences of back and forth, all basically, so we'll see how it works. And then the Book Fair is the 25th through the 29th, and then, can I see, is pushing electronic?
E-walk, is it?
E-walk, pushing e-walk as much as possible. That's all I got.
Thank you. Oh, Missy, do you have a financial update, or did you give it in there?
I do not, no other financial report other than the single signature warrants.
Okay, see that three times.
Time twister.
Yep. Mr. Lynch?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think the first item that was requested was an update on ESER funds and how they've been spent for Halifax, so I prepared the ESER 1 sheet, the total allocation that's explained. We had some proportionate, or the piece to share with the private school in the first ESER grant, that was not true about ESER 2 and 3, but that, that's, shows the spending for ESER 1, and what items, we spent things on, and explanation for each one, so some of those things are just communication pieces, tools to help support teachers make interactive presentations, some professional development about teaching remotely. We had Rooney Carter kick off the year with, just trying to share some strategies for engaging students in a hybrid environment, and some technology pieces, so that's an explanation for ESER 1. ESER 2, Halifax was allocated $106,000, and that grant is still open. It was applied for this summer. Again, these are entitlement grants by district, so there's a formula, and that's how funds are, funds are allocated. So far, under half of that money has been utilized to date. We're still determining our needs for this year. Again, the funding just came in, I believe, in, in early August, so so far, we've spent things on, again, technology tools for teachers, hotspots for staff or students who may need it, and student surveys for social-emotional learning, as we are required to spend a certain percentage on meeting the SEL needs of students, so that's an update on ESER 1 and ESER 2, and ESER 3 was submitted at the end of September, and that grant is being evaluated by DESI. I think many people were submitting prior to the deadline, so we haven't heard back on that allocation. That is $225,000 to be spent prior to September 2024, so again, those priorities identified in the ESER grants are academics and instruction, social-emotional supports, and operations to address ongoing coordination and provision of services related to COVID-19. I don't know if anybody had any questions about any of those pieces?
Do you say $225,000 in ESER 3?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Is there any information that you can parse out on how much extra we've needed in the budget due to COVID issues?
So, early in the pandemic, our business director devised a system where we would note in our, in our system, any COVID-related expenses, so we're, she is able to track COVID-related expenses earlier in the year, last year, end of last year. The primary categories were PPE, HVAC, which was a, you know, making sure systems were helping to mitigate the situation, and then technology needs in particular, so those were probably the three. So those were probably the three main categories, not only for Halifax, but for our schools in general.
A lot of the funding that we used to, to support things we needed for COVID came from the CARES Act. So it had to be like specifically into those categories, yeah. So it's probably pretty easy to parse out and get an idea, I shouldn't say easy, for children, easy at all. But reasonable requests to see how much. I'd be curious myself, actually.
Yeah, I'd be curious because I feel like that impacts our budget and planning going forward, knowing what is going to be in the past. What do we have to keep continuing and how much does it actually cost the district? But how much have we gotten in grants also to cover it? Because if you get a grant to cover it and it's not going to be something in the future, it flashes out. So, you know, just for budget planning, I think that would be really useful information.
A few years ago too, when we were getting in the budget season, we were having a similar conversation, but not related to COVID, just for that very reason, to like have an understanding of, you know, like the re-grant we get for technology needs. What if that goes away? Now we're responsible to keep that part of the budget sustainable. So, yeah, I, I see your point. Yeah, if you could make a note and, and ask Christine, that would be fantastic. Thank you. And did you have a question, Jim?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. The next portion is the Halifax MCAS results, so I.
It's too bad we don't have this situation up and running, huh?
I would be happy to present. This is a, an adaptation of what was presented sort of at the state level, so I'm not going to read it to you. But I just would like to remind everybody that on slide two about what was different, that we had a much wider timeline to administer the test. It was half as long, so students were randomly assigned one session instead of two. Students could take it remotely statewide, about 20% of students took it remotely. And there's a redesigned Parent Guardian report. So inside of this presentation, I think the high level view was that participation remained very high. It was high for Halifax in the nineties, in the nineties for percentage wise. That was true about statewide too. People asked statewide, were the results accurate? And then the state believes that in some, that the, in some meaning SUM, that the results are accurate and pretty inconsistent. But at the student level, there may be wider variation because they took half as many sections. So instead of two ELA sections, there's, there was one. So that was one common thing that comes up. You have all the slides in here about the percent. The, the performance drop, the state used the phrase, "Students encountered an academic headwind during the COVID-19."
I love their fancy language.
Yes, that's their, an academic headwind. Everybody knows the challenges that families face, that teachers face, that students face. And so when you see the dip in ELA and in math, I don't think anyone is particularly surprised. It seemed more significant in math. Although at the high school ELA level, students did better than they did in 2019. So I think that's a little bright spot of resilience. As far as Halifax goes specifically, our results, I would say, were challenging conditions. Our, our students performed as compared to the state. The students in Halifax performed better than the statewide comparison. We, I shared with you the three through six performance in ELA and in math. I think the most important piece is what are our next steps based on that information? So of course, the, the data is best in teacher's hands. So reviewing subject grade and student level data, trying to figure out for individual students what their, what their needs are, I think would be a valuable use of educator time as opposed to making judgments about the curriculum when the inputs just weren't as strong. And then putting interventions in place based on students' needs. However, MCAS isn't the only tool that we use. So with STAR testing and other pieces like that, I think teachers have a, a pretty good handle on what students' needs are. There are some additional steps about piloting the new ELA program and making a determination about what the next adoption will be. Some students are exposed to CKLA, others to collaborative literacy. Some classrooms are still using Reading Street, which is aligned with ELA frameworks. We also have our Title I program that has targeted supports for identified students. And people are participating in the DESI Network for Literacy Support and Continued Work in Science, Science on Curriculum Alignment and Mapping. And the last component is just the, a little preview of the parent report. If you have a student at Halifax Elementary, you receive the parent report digitally in the Parents Square Secure Dropbox. And I think just remember that there's a little less accuracy at the student level. So they have a few dots for the, you know, performance band of your student. So we all faced a challenging year. There, there's some information there that just shows that it may not, as on the sample report, it says 510, but you notice those gray dots on the ELA side that say, well, your student could have performed a little bit lower, a little bit higher, we're not quite sure. And also, the student growth percentile across the state was significantly lower. So there's an explanation there about how a student growth percentile was calculated as well. So statewide, students perform.
Student growth meaning academically or student population?
Academic growth as, as measured by the, the state test. So that's a little bit of an overview, the highlights of the Halifax students and performance compared a little bit to some of the information that the state shared as well about wider data.
Question, is this slideshow on our website so people can have access to it and look at it? If not, is there a way that maybe, because we don't have the ability to present and have it on TV tonight, can we make it available or people can email you and request it or?
So following each meeting, the entire packet, including this, will be made available on our, via our calendar. That's where they all link up. And it actually may already be there, but I will double check with Karen to make sure that it's part of that.
Okay, thank you. Awesome. And I already know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Is there any rumblings of how they're gonna handle MCAS this year or we're not even there yet?
From the, from the deadlines that I've received from DESI, it's business as, as usual. And the test dates have been, and windows have been shared and it's.
No remote option, I'm assuming, because that's, there's no remote learning.
That is correct. No remote option.
Okay. All right. Anybody else on the MCAS presentation? Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Sure.
Ms. Prue? Doctor Prue? Excuse me?
No problem. Thank you. I wanted to first begin by thanking Halifax Fire Department for their help, helping Nurse Byrne with the Test and Stay program. We, we appreciate their assistance. Test and Stay is, is in place. And we have discussed before, the intent is to try to prevent students from needing to quarantine unless necessary. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we do have a, a draft of the Strategic Strategy for District Improvement Plan and goals, which were presented to the staff on opening day. We have a one-page summary of a multi-year plan that is being reviewed by the administrative team that we will present with, to you in November. And we have a series of strategic goals that we have asked our principals to begin aligning their, not only their school goals, but their, their personal goals for the upcoming school year so that we are moving in the same direction. I think it was the end of September. Trying to, so September 30th, I sent out a notification to all families about the extension of the mask mandate, which was extended till at least November 1st. In your package, you will find an FY23 budget development planning schedule. Some changes to the planning schedule, as we talked about earlier, was hosting the Tri-Town meeting to discuss the Silver Lake Capital Plan, which impacts our three communities. But I also wanted to note that we have moved the special education presentation, the technology presentation and the K through six curriculum budget presentations to the Joint School Committee. So one of the things that we talked about is rather than having the same presentation four times, is one joint school committee for those three people to present to our school committees, the opportunity to ask questions. This is the first year that we've done it and we want to see if this is an effective venue. And so we, we look forward to presenting in November. And it's also that time of year where we begin to solicit from you your input and ideas in terms of your concerns about the upcoming budget. We have made a request of the principals to begin gathering their information in terms of what their needs for the upcoming school year will be as well. And so I'm happy to answer any questions, but those are the main changes to the, the planning schedule from previous years.
I think the Tri-Town presentation is a fantastic idea and hopefully it'll prove to be one. Because that's a lot.
We're hopeful. Thank you. And thank you for being willing to try it. We'll, we'll see how it goes and we can always revisit it if it doesn't meet our needs. The final thing in your packet is the October 1st data, hot off the presses. If you look at the, if you look at the site that says October 1st enrollment in bold, the far left, you'll find the word Halifax. And then you'll see the breakdown by grade level and the elementary total of 564 students. The SC stands for school choice. If Halifax had voted to be a school choice district, this is where you would find those numbers. Okay? And then you can also, if you follow it through, you'll see the number of Halifax students in each grade at the middle school and the high school as well. So that's how this chart is read. If you turn it over, you can see the October 1st enrollments with regards to Silver Lake FY assessment percentages. And if you go to Halifax under 2023, Silver Lake FY assessment percentages, you'll see an increase from last, from last year, from 30.7 to 30.8. And then if you look at the Union 31 shared cost percentages, you'll see a decrease by 1%. Last year, it was 31.4. This year is at 30.4. So that is our October 1st enrollment. And in terms of overall enrollment since last year, we're at 564 as of, as of October 1st. Last year at this time, we were at 569. So a five-student difference. We do not yet have breakouts yet in terms of private parochial, homeschooling. Those are, those pieces of data, you tend to come later in, in the year. And we will be presenting those to you as we go through our budget season as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
And that's it for me.
One thing I thought of when you were speaking, do you think that it would be prudent for our committee to send a letter thanking the Halifax Fire Department for their participation in this test and stay? Because they really went above and beyond and stepped up and allowed us to get ahead of the curve when the state is usually behind it?
We, we can certainly send a letter. And yes, I should, I should also mention is that not only is CIC still working towards. It's the, the health program that's affiliated with Test and Stay that was going to help support our nurses with Test and Stay. They have had difficulty staffing all of the schools and meeting all of the needs. So one of the things that the state announced today is that should we have a, a need, we would be able to enlist the support of the National Guard at this time if necessary. So at this point, we're able to handle the testing that we've, we've had to have. And we appreciate the support of the Halifax Fire Department. We absolutely will send a letter of thanks to them. I think that's a wonderful idea.
Okay, great. Do we need a vote? Can we probably make a motion to vote on that, to do that?
I'll make a motion just in the thinking of the fair.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a few dates to remember before we adjourn to go into executive session. November 2nd is an in-service day for our teachers. November 11th is Veterans Day. November 22nd is our next school committee meeting. November 24th is an early release, K through six. They break at noon and there is no lunch. And the 25th and 26th, we have off for Thanksgiving. So with that, I need a, what? Somebody say something? Oh, I thought somebody said something. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to reconvene to regular session, to adjourn regular session.
Motion.
You're gonna read, you have to read the whole doodad, Jim.
Yep.
You have to read the whole, the legal language.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You want it?
I think I have. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, contract negotiation.
You have to read the whole thing.
Which thing am I reading?
The whole, basically.
The executive session.
All right. Okay. I move that we break into executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiation under MGL Chapter 30A subsection A3 with respect to collective bargaining. Not to reconvene in open session. One second. Thank you. Roll call, Ford?
Yep.
Yourself is a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. That's it.